Who's in the corner? Who?
Nobody puts a Beijing as a question.
Jordan's here? Where's Jordan? Oh, I can't see him. He needs to scoot over a little bit.
I know, I was sitting here, I'm like...
That's how I'm serious. I know, right? No, I saw him earlier, I gave him a wave.
I know.
I got that. We're good.
Now we can see each other.
I didn't miss it. What's that?
Oh, he wasn't...
I don't think so. He asked me to tell the superintendent if he would... To make sure that the superintendent please reads his...
Madam President, let's roll.
His letter that he wrote to his list, or whatever it was.
I am the president of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So anyway. I've covered it.
Okay. And two, we need approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify with a "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries, seven to zero. Section three, consent agenda items. Tonight, that includes the minutes from October 5th, dispersment, and the return to learn plan. Administration recommends and I say move this board to approve the consent agenda. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any things to move or comment on? Okay. All those in favor signify with a "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries, seven to zero. Section four, reports will start at the superintendent's report.
Yeah, I'm gonna keep it brief. I know, like it seems every month, every meeting, we've got a lot to get to, so I don't... I want us to be able to get on to things, but I do just wanna say we officially have brought first quarter to a close. This was the first day of second quarter. So thanks to everyone for everything they're doing to make this school year work, certainly in a much different place than we were last year. If it's possible to be busier, I think we know conclusively, yes, it is possible to be busier now than we were last year. I think we felt like certainly this has to be, you know, the busiest we would ever be, transitioning back to school in a kind of a very unknown place, but yeah, I think we've definitely found ways to be busier, and so I appreciate everyone's effort with getting our first quarter along the way, and just like last year, I think little by little, we'll definitely make some improvements, and you know, that was one of the things that next meeting, we'll have some information on our pulse check. So that's something we did last year progressively, just to make sure we are making progress. So where we start, where we finish is different, and so we'll be looking at that information and certainly trying to be responsive to that. So that's one thing I wanted to mention. One of the things that once again was very much in limbo this time last year, but seems to be going really well, are just our kids and our staff, coaches, sponsors are getting those things underway, and those things are progressing, and so there still takes a lot... It takes a lot of care, and there's a lot of precautions that we're taking, but those seasons have started on time and seem to be progressing in a much better way than they were last year, and that was also very much an uncertainty of whether we would be able to get some of those things in, and I've definitely heard people comment how they really appreciate those things coming to fruition and us making the... Or having the ability to do some things that last year were done very differently, or we had to approach in a much different way. So appreciate everyone's help with that. And then, once again, just, you know, just ask everybody to keep that in mind, that while it seems like we're back to normal, it takes a tremendous amount of energy, and don't undersell that, and so just ask for everybody's patience and kindness as we're interacting with one another throughout the rest of the year, and so that's really just all I wanted to mention, is lots of things going on, and it won't hold us up from getting on to the rest of our agenda.
You question about that? All right. Thank you. Four point oh two is the MSBA monthly board report. I'm not sure if everyone's had a chance to watch it yet. It's primarily talking about some mental health things that are going on at state level, and then the comments, which we have all been getting, you know, a plethora of emails about, so I don't think we need to watch it as a group tonight. They do mention in there also the filing dates, which I believe is, and correct me if I'm wrong, December 8th through the 20th. It's a bit of a shorter time period, so that date was mentioned in the video as well. Anybody else pick up anything else from it that they would wanna mention to the group tonight? All right. And we will keep going. Four point oh three, return to learn test force meeting.
Yeah, something that, you know, one of the commitments we wanted to do is each quarter, we have a group that gets together, you can kinda look at the report, you can look at the information that they reviewed ahead of time, so I tried to give them some of these statistics that we continue to track, so we did that last year, continue to keep a pulse on things. We don't make any absolute decision based upon that, but it just gives us a barometer of, you know, are our community conditions climbing? Are they getting better? Just so we can take that into consideration. We did put some slides together, and I wanted to draw people's attention to one of the sources that we looked to for information that was... That helped us last year are these monthly webinars that the Department of Education and the Department of Health and Senior Services put on, so they had one of those in September. Honestly, I think they had hoped they would not have to do those this year, and so they were like, yeah, I guess we're gonna have to continue to keep up with evolving conditions. So that is one of the places where we try to make ourselves available to get that information, and then also wanna just have this committee touch base at least once a quarter, just to get a pulse on how things are working, and certainly if there's any major transitions, or if there's any, I guess what I would call benchmarks that we're meeting, that how are those things going? And so we haven't yet had the opportunity to cross that threshold of more stus being eligible to get vaccinated, but I think that's in the near future, and so that's why we also want this group to continually meet throughout the year to monitor some of those situations, how are our mitigation strategies going, things of that nature. So this is really just a chance to get some feedback. I posted so that you guys could see kind of the complete feedback of notes that we took, but then I also tried to just summarize some of those items on the report form. We did have a couple of board members that joined us, so certainly would, you know, would be interested if they have anything to add to it, but conclusively, I think one of the new components that is... We definitely are having to ease our way into is just this modified quarantine protocol that wasn't really available until the end of last year. We didn't necessarily adopt that last year, and so that's something that there's just... Sometimes there's always confusion, and even the people that do contact tracing for a living, it's confusing to them sometimes too, as you're trying to trace down the situations, but you know, that's something that we certainly know, appreciate people's patience as we try and work through, keeping kids at school if at all possible, but at the same time, it is, like I said, it's a... Every situation is unique, and it certainly can get confusing. We also took a little bit of pulse about just the topic of staff vaccinations from a policy and procedure standpoint, and so got a lot of good feedback on how possibly that should be something that we entertain, and it looks like people are maybe trending towards, instead of just an absolute mandate, testing in lieu of, you know, if someone isn't vaccinated, or having some ways to accomplish maybe what you're trying to accomplish of having the safest environment possible without having to, you know, to do that in certain ways. So I think that's something certainly that we, as a group here, can have more conversations about and should probably make space for talking about, but I at least just wanted to scratch the surface of getting the pulse of what folks think might be the right way to approach that. And then lastly, just ideas that we could do for staff, students, and parents in that realm of mental health and wellness. So you can see some of the ideas there, little by little, we are gonna try to layer in as many things as we can that show we are trying to be sensitive to how busy everyone is and how hard they're working, and so we wanna keep some of these ideas in mind as well as if there's anything else we can keep... Come up with. So those were some of the three items that we asked for specific feedback on, so I know, Michelle, Justin, you were able to connect, so if there's anything you'd like to add, happy to have you do that.
I mean, I think I just... I enjoy the transparency of what you put together for this group, and now it's in public content partaking as well, and it's just, it's so all encompassing. It's showing everything that you're monitoring, including even the CDC, you know, all the things that you're taking into consideration, so I just think it's really helpful when that group meets, and it's parents and staff, I mean, it's really, it's people from the community, and then also are given a chance to be heard. So I just, I appreciate the meetings, I get a lot out of them, and I think they really are helpful to the people who participate, who maybe think, how is this even being decided? It's really well laid out, and I appreciate that.
Yep. No, nothing. Just to echo, I think when I read these reports, it's the conversation again, so anybody who wasn't at the meeting can really get a sense of the conversation that was had and the ideas that came, you know, that were discussed, and yeah, I appreciate that.
And certainly if there's anything, if we are anticipating any major changes in our return to learn plan, we would put that on the table with this group. At this time, you know, as you saw in the consent agenda, we're really not advising or recommending any major changes, and so certainly that's why we have this group intact too, so that if we are thinking about making some noticeable changes to how we're handling things, we would wanna get the input of this group and then be able to report to you whether... How was that change received, so that we had that as well?
Can I just make a comment on the PowerPoint presentation of the COVID statistics? Is that... Is this a good time for that?
Yeah.
You know, I... I had a question at first of just thinking, it looks like it's maybe slide six where it's the new case rate, and we're seeing Afton compared to the county and the state, you know, kind of gradual decline on the county, but then spikes for our Afton community, six-three-one-two-three zip code, and my first thought was, do you ever have an opportunity to talk to anybody at the Public Health Department that might help us think about why we're different? But then it occurred to me, this is six-three-one-two-three, and so then when you scroll... When I scrolled down a little bit further and actually looked at our... Are any of these... These are all still county comparisons? Is that right? Like the positivity rates and stuff like that? Those aren't... These are not specific to... This is not our Afton district dashboard. These are all community.
So yeah, some sources are a little bit easier for me to get at, where six-three-one-two-three, you know, has been tracked, I guess, kind of progressively since last year. Other times, it's a little bit more difficult to really feel like you've honed in on zip code data that you feel is, I guess, reliable and has been in place maybe since last year. So yeah, some of them are just county, and that's usually because I felt like I wasn't able to find something that specifically isolated six-three-one-two-three.
Perfect. But just... It's good data.
And so, you know, the big takeaway is with the data, it's just amazing at where you can be in a year, 'cause you know, from some standpoint, the conditions are worse now than they were last year, but yet we do have people vaccinated, we've learned how to protect ourselves, and we feel like we can do school, you know, safely, whereas that was very, a very big unknown this time last year, and so I think it's just a good reminder of how much you can learn in a year and put it into good use, and get back to doing things that you maybe wish you would've been able to do this time last year.
So Dr. Rock, what helps you and the administration and the building leadership of all of the buildings kind of dive into some of the building-specific differences on that very last slide? And, you know, I'm just wondering that kind of what resources you have, or what conversations you're having to kind of dive into, why is Rogers different, you know, than the others? But I'm not a statistician, so I don't even know if that's like statistically different, but are you? So I mean, it may not be, right? So I'm just wondering, do you... What kind of conversations are you having, and then resources are you having to maybe help us understand what that particular table is telling us?
Yeah, you know, the one thing that I think is unique, which before the school year started, everyone was in a little bit of limbo on, you know, we will have a building where one grade level isn't vaccinated, and so I think that that should be noted, is that of all of the grade levels, and they also have a very different schedule than we do at fifth grade. So you've sort of got this convergence of kind of one grade level where most of the kids are not eligible, and yet they have a completely different schedule, they're mixing classes and things of that nature. I guess it would be interesting if we ran our sixth grade more like fifth grade, where there's one classroom teacher, they're covering all of the subjects, and we're just doing it more of a upper elementary model. Would we see different results? And so I think there's a little bit of uniqueness. I haven't reached out to any other, you know, districts to see whether their sixth grade is different than seventh and eighth grade, but I do think going into the year, we thought that could be an interesting dynamic, and you know, particularly if we did not exactly knowing what we would do with masks, that was gonna be a little bit of a paradox, where you might have some high amount of students and staff that are vaccinated, but then here you have another, a grade level that's not even eligible yet, and so how do you handle those mitigation strategies without people feeling like they're singled out for various reasons? So that's the best I can, I guess, put a little bit of context to there about the uniqueness of that grade level, where it's located, the schedule that they use, that why is it different? Why is that grade level different? Why is that building different compared to what we're not seeing at Manier? We're not seeing that at Gosh, we're not really seeing that in seventh and eighth grade. So what are some of those unique things that are, I guess, special about that? That's the best explanation I have about why we might be seeing something there.
And it's... And I think it's one of those things, it's a function of the numbers look different compared to the other numbers, but then when you actually look at the number and think, well, only thirty-five students out of the entire school have done, you know, the modified quarantine, whatever.
Yep.
I think then that puts it in a different perspective that isn't just comparison. I think the comparison and what you just explained about, it makes a lot of sense.
Yep, and so certainly, you know, when we have occurrences that come up that, you know, we certainly don't want people to think that, you know, we just make these decisions, we don't consult anyone at the Public Health Department, quite the opposite. We're always on the phone to them, especially when we see instances like that crop up and just saying, are you sure there's nothing else we need to be doing? Is this concerning to you? And even calling a second time and saying, okay, just here were some questions we forgot to ask you the first time, and I still just want to make sure that this is a... You don't think this is so concerning that we should be initiating different procedures? So we really do try to rely on other folks besides just us making decisions, and at the same time, we also are balancing a clear directive, which was part of the webinar. Kids that are eligible to be at school should be at school. That's been made clear, and that I think that we want to embrace that, and we don't want to jeopardize parents and kids feeling like, but I can come to school, and then you're gonna put... You're gonna tell me not to come? So it really is trying to balance making sure we shouldn't be doing something that the Health Department thinks would be a good thing to do, while also honoring kind of that clear directive that we've gotten to not exclude students from coming to school if they are, if they're well enough to do that.
Yep, thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thank you for all of that information, Travis. We will move on to four point oh four, and that is our book study conversation. So as a board, we are tasked with continuing to learn and grow the ways we're doing that this year, as we're reading a book together called Governance Core, and Patricia's related us in that conversation about two chapters that we need to review in the last couple weeks.
So chapter three, Superintendent Governance Mindset. And so there's so much about the superintendent, and actually I talked to you earlier in the book about how the superintendent were a part of a team together, and it seems a little awkward to have these conversations without including Travis, but since I didn't call you in advance, Travis, you do not have to comment at all tonight. If you feel like you want to, you're welcome to.
Yeah, I thought we were gonna put him on the spot.
Then I thought, you know, with everything else that's been going on for the last, I don't know, a couple of years, I didn't think that would be appropriate, so... Anyway, so I sent you some questions, but you'd already probably read through everything, and like I said, one of my favorite quotes was, governance is chess, not checkers, and this chapter is really about governance for us too, so everything I was reading in there, I was thinking, yes, and yes, for both and. And I was just wondering if there were any kind of thoughts or quotes that were in there that jumped out at you all as you were reading? Because there were a bunch, like I was like underlining a bunch. Mike's nodding, so Mike, anything in particular?
Yeah, so I think it was in the second example, the guy, as a guy quoted and emphasized that you must never violate that trust. Relationship is so important. Having a strong relationship isn't having the... Whether some weird stuff...
Others?
No, I didn't have it.
Oh, okay.
I'm making a lot of noise for no reason.
I think most of the quotes that stood out to me sort of have to do with some of the questions that we're gonna keep looking at as we go, but on page seventy, sixty-nine and seventy, there's... I guess on sixty-nine, the last paragraph starts with, the first challenge is for the superintendent in order to agree on what is strategic and what is tactical, and that just really resonated with me and made me think of all the times when I have to really process for myself, is this strategic and is this what we are, you know, supposed to be spending our energy on, or is this more tactical and this has to do with what the people who are working in the district do? So that, I thought a lot about that.
And our superintendent has to do both.
Right, yeah.
Right? So the chapter started off with two that kind of, they're the same but different. The superintendent is a key supporter as well as a partner with the board in governance work, and the board is part of the superintendent's team. And so I was just kinda looking at those two and thinking really about that coherence, that integration, that kind of constant, so we have to think about it both ways, and I think that's hard for us sometimes as board members. I know for me, I have to step out and say, okay, wait, we're all doing this together sometimes.
And it's part of that convergence of the, you know, our government system, the executive, judicial, and just state of branches kind of all in one bucket, so we have to play the multiple roles, because we're kind of the hinge point between the community and the district in a lot of ways.
So the second question I shared with you guys, I wasn't sure if it made sense to you, and I hope it did a little bit, because the different governance styles that are discussed on fifty-five and fifty-six, you know, the purposeful approach, that's like the ideal, and that's what our author is telling us, but there's this hands-off approach, and there's the preemptive damage control approach, and I was thinking about it, and I was like, so what... Why would it... Why would, if everybody's looking at this saying, oh, this is the way it always should be, why would a superintendent choose to use those tactics in order to govern? And I think that would be helpful to us to kind of discuss some of those things, because I might lean that way if I were a superintendent, to some of the...
Because it's easier? I think it would be easier to do that hands-off approach and that... Did I remember? I mean, I know our board meetings last a long time.
Yeah.
They go for the shortest board. That's what they're open for, the shortest, we do, they just don't feel any... They care. I almost felt like they didn't care about what the board thought, it was only what they thought.
Okay, yeah.
I think some of them are certainly cultural as well, especially when you go to the preemptive damage control approach, so you know, there's a lot of districts with a lot of toxic culture, and if that exists already, I imagine there's less resistance to just keeping a less dynamic than there is to changing something about it.
And I think from the hands-off approach, what I took away from that was that I'm also not sure that a superintendent that does the hands-off approach has a strategic approach either, and it just made me... That whole section made me think, very tactical, very just do it, just what is the business of a district, not necessarily what's the strategic direction, and I didn't get a sense that the superintendent in a hands-off approach was even being strategic. It was just, stay out of my business, and my business is the day-to-day, not the strategic, and then I just wondered, does anybody have their eye on the strategy in that particular scenario?
So more along the lines of, you make your decisions over here, I'm not part of the governance team, you're doing that.
And I'm not even sure if there's, right, if there's no connection, is the board even doing governance at that point? I guess that's where I was going, like if there is no connection, I'm not even sure the board's doing governance work at that. Everything seemed very transactional or tactical to me in that particular section or approach, I mean.
The author also called out correctly that, you know, experience can lead to some of these things too.
Not really understanding the bigger role. The interesting, Justin, that you said that about the board too, because I can see that makes boards start doing more of that, like micromanaging and all of those things, thinking that that's their role, so... I don't wanna leave you guys out down here, but I can't see you really well, so...
I have no problem speaking up, but you're good.
Yeah, it wasn't really presented this way, but I do wonder if there's a natural evolution or cycle to that, because I think you're right, if there's a micromanagement and a very focus on the tactical without the strategy of a hands-on, over time, does that evolve into the, hey, okay, we need to do this different, and preemptive damage control is gonna be my MO versus, you know?
I would expect there's some adjustment based on the dynamic of a board to what comes to the superintendent side.
Over time?
It'd even result from something... How did that ever happen? Did that happen?
Right. But I think this is helpful to us to have these conversations too, and look at this, because you can see it kind of, you can see how that happens, and we've seen other boards, and it's a little shocking sometimes that...
Well, and even our board changes year to year, and I think in the next chapter, that's where we're really focused on that, but you know, after being on the board for a few years, I can reflect, it can feel really different from year to year, not necessarily bad and good, but you know, everybody has different style, different things that they care about, and so when someone cycles off the board and someone comes on, it does, it changes things for the superintendents certainly.
So what I did like about this chapter, even though it was a little bit longer, is there were some good stories in here, and so in those, in the stories about the, what they were calling the successful superintendents, and some were superintendents in one's place for a very long time with very large districts.
All of them have very large districts.
Overwhelmingly large districts, which was really interesting, but I was just wondering if there was a story that resonated with anyone in particular about the approach that the superintendent took?
One thing that I don't know and didn't do any homework on, when I looked at where these particular districts were and the stories resonated around, there seemed to be a lot of interaction. I... What am I trying to say? Are these school districts that are really large and have a lot of capacity and have a lot of community capacity, that have different types of board members that allow for the success stories to happen, versus a more challenged, less, you know, less affluent or maybe less advantaged or has less capacity from a community perspective, and then obviously then that's the pool that fills the board, and then to be able to have that dynamic? I just wasn't sure, because I got the sense that there was just, not that we don't, we spend a lot of time together, and we spend a lot of time talking outside of the board meetings and really trying to understand, but there just seemed to be a lot of capacity here that I think led to some of that success, and just when I think about Vancouver or Greenville, or you know, particularly these two communities, I know, it just made me wonder, I don't know.
Yeah, I struggled with that too, because there's a big difference between like Francis Howell or Parkway, and it doesn't... You know, that's one of the questions that I wanted to knock him on the spot, but at some point in time, I thought here Travis's perspective.
I know, right?
But it's just, just having been in those board meetings and seeing some of that dynamic and working in some of those environments, it's just wildly different, and it was hard for me to figure out how to apply, because even in some of those states, board members are paid. I mean, there's a...
Oh, really? How do we fix that?
We sound... So the, but it's just, it just felt weird, that section kind of felt weird, I mean, for that reason, it's hard for me to really hit it to what we're doing, not that I'm saying that there's not lessons in there, it's just a little locker for me.
I like on page sixty-two, that was the end of the story about Laura Schwalm, Schwalm, I have no idea. From Garden Road. Where she said, "I came to this work to make a difference for children." And sometimes in the superintendency, you can start to feel far from that, to keep that at the forefront of my mind and to help get through the difficult times that always come. I would remind myself that while I was now at account and looking for, I still look for the children just as I did when I was a teacher. And that, I mean, I've only worked with two superintendents in our district, but I, I definitely have felt that from looking at them. And I, I think the whole district can feel that. And part of it is because we're smaller, I think, I, I imagine it's easier to keep focused on that with twenty-seven hundred kids instead of seventy-five thousand kids. But that resonated with me, because I felt like, yeah, those are the leaders I've worked with. I know, I know that's how they look at things, so I appreciate that.
That kind of goes back to my question earlier when we started tonight, and I said, why are we here? And Justin's like, for the children, that's right, for the children, that's why we're here. Other thoughts from the, these stories? So one of the things that, this was on the, the bottom of sixty-two and the, and on sixty-three, this is the superintendent for the Singer Unified School District in California. And, and it's about the why, and making sure that the board understands the why. And there's this conversation, and there's this ongoing conversation about why we do this. And they did not care that much about getting a seven to zero vote, it was more important that the board understood. And, and I think that we talk about that here as well. It's like, I was in a, I was actually at MSBA a couple of years ago, and I heard a board member in a presentation talking, and he said, no, you've got to work it out, you've got to have the seven-zero. And it's like, no, you, you don't have to have the seven-zero, but you do need to be able to articulate why and understand everything. And I think that really resonated when I was reading this piece here about that. And it's uncomfortable sometimes for us, and I'm sure it's very uncomfortable for Travis, right? People work it out, but, but as long as you know that we've got the information that we need.
So on page sixty-four, I noticed the board only had five board members, and then the superintendent, I take it was the sixth board member? Is that something we see in other chapters? I don't feel like that's something we have in Missouri, I don't think.
It used to be one.
It used to be.
It used to have it, and then the seventh was, I think, the legal counsel.
One of the other stories said twelve board members, I mean, different states.
Yeah.
So I was sitting there, that was, it's kind of weird, you have twelve, you have six, six votes, who makes it final?
I felt grateful that we didn't have twelve when I read that. That's a lot of people to call me, that's a good point.
That's true. And the question that I sent to you all, were, were there any things that these superintendents did that you think we might better try to support?
That's a question.
So i- is there anything that the superintendents did that we might like? So should we make sure that we have dinner before every board meeting? Kind of like that one. But, yeah, and so it, it's not necessarily something that we need to answer tonight, but I think there, you know, as I was reading through, they did have different approaches, they didn't all do the same things. And so were there some things on there that the board did? Like, you know, some of the boards did regular meetings at different buildings, or, you know, those type of things, so.
The one thing that came up for me, but, and it did in a few different places, is the, and this is on page sixty-two, but the establishment of governance structure with emphasis on protocols and norms. I keep saying that, but I really hope that's part of what we do when we get to the end of this book. I mean, it's also something that helps with new board members, you know, really laying out and defining what our protocols and norms are, so that things aren't just left to chance or guess. I think that's something I would, I would like to support, but I think would help depth of our act, or would help everybody, especially new people, but all of us, just to, then, then when you're in question about how something is handled, you just know, because we just are able to look at it, you don't have to read policies and everything else all the time.
So we would establish some, some of these and have them very clear what they are. All right, so before we get to the next chapter, that there's, this was a question not to answer necessarily, but just thinking always, how can we better support the superintendent in his governance role? Because we know he's tactical, and we know he's doing all of those things, and we ask lots of questions about like programs and stuff, but really thinking about that governance mindset and how to, how do we continue on to support that? The other question though was about, and we started with this, is those core values. And I'm reading through, and it was about relationship and trust. And so, so thinking about what that looks like, and if there were any other values that, that we have espoused, or that they've, you know, talked about in here that we think are key.
Well, it's interesting, because I think we've spent a lot of time as a board having personal conversations about how do we cohe- cohere, I was gonna make a verb. How do we, how do we come together, how are we, how are we cohesive as a board? And so I think one of the things that jumped out at me when we think about relationships is that this is a chapter, and this is a conversation about the relationship between the board and the superintendent. And so I feel like we haven't intentionally, I don't feel, had conversations about how to build that relationship as much as we've had this relationship, especially thinking about the, kind of the history pre-COVID that, that some of you have had on the board of just, what, what are, what are the things that you have done to build that board cohesion? You know, at dinner and retreats, and different things that you guys, several of you longstanding members have talked about that we haven't been able to do. And so we've spent a lot of time talking about, how do we do that amongst ourselves? And it jumped out at me that we, I don't feel have had a whole lot of intentional conversations about how we build that same relationship with the superintendent.
And intentionality around it too, right? Kind of figuring that out with where we've been and the space that we're in.
Well, I think him writing out to, you know, make sure he gets to talk to each of us, what I'm wondering now is an example of, to get those conversations, which used to just happen more naturally before COVID, and now we're not actually in each other's space and have conversations, we have to be more intentional to do that.
Yeah.
And to directly answer your, your question, I have written down continuous improvement and integrity as a couple of, we just went through that.
Yeah.
Values discussion. So both of those seem to, to apply in terms of the core values that we've identified as a district.
Any further thoughts on this chapter before we move on? All right, so this one should be easy, y'all, especially you new folks. Welcoming new trustees. So I started being more reflective on this one. How long did it take for you to feel confident as a contributing member of the school board? And, and, you know, I think for several of us anyway, we had this conversation, you think you know a lot until you become a school board member, and then you're like, what? So Mike, you're the longest standing board member, do you remember way back when?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. So you're talking about the, what specific things helped you?
So what, what specific things helped you, and then how did you kind of, when, when did you feel like, was it a year? Was it two years? Was it, you know, the first meeting?
I would say it was, it really felt like three years before. I was really, I was really in culture at the board at that time, it was totally different. More like what we see in some other districts where we're yelling at each other and upsetting each other. There was a lot of that, what we were screaming about. Anyway, but the, so it was a, it was an interesting time. And it took me a while to figure out, because I had to figure out what, what it even helped.
Okay.
It was, it was difficult. I feel like we're in a pretty good place for new people to come in, even though it feels weird because we get a chance to, to actually have some healthy engagement. And for sure, I think we do it often. Don't you regret asking?
No, no, because I think that is an interesting perspective.
It really is.
Because it was a very different board even when I came. How about down here?
Me, I'm still straight home with it. But I also, when I was starting, we were all Zoom, and I didn't feel that connection at all. And it's up to you to speak on it, it's very, I'm sorry, it's not happening, but it's just a little bit of a lag.
You're at your three-year mark either. Jordan, how about you?
I think it was after a couple of meetings, I came on a really good board, and was incredibly welcoming, but we, when I came on, it was not virtual, so that face-to-face is tremendous. But I think that there's something to that, you know, it's kind of not exactly, but it's kind of like the presidency. You can make all these promises, and you can say all these things about these plans that you have, that you want to do, but until you're actually elected into the position, and you actually understand some of the behind-the-scenes executive content that, that is going on, you, you really don't have a grasp on that. So it literally will take you a couple of meetings, a couple of discussions, before you really, and I, I don't see it happening any faster, I mean, unless we had some book of like, oh, here you go, and now you know everything that's going on, because there's something to certain amounts of privilege, you know, not, not outside of transparency by any means, but, you know, there's that. So for me, it was just a couple of meetings and speaking with key players that helped me get through that process.
Thank you, and I, yeah, that's the thing. I, I feel like everybody on this board really has taken the initiative when they came on board to ask questions and do those things versus just showing up for meetings, so. And what, what are some specific things, Kenny, that helped you when you came onto the board? And we weren't as good as we were, as we are now, I know, when you came in.
One thing, I didn't know exactly what I'd get into, you know, fully. I don't think anybody really does, you know, here. I was the one with policy and everything like that, but one thing was the stability of everybody, everybody was nice. You could ask questions, you could talk it out, you could disagree, and walk away still smiling. And that's what helped me, you know, first. But as far as being comfortable and confident as being a contributing member of the school board, I don't know that it happened right away. I mean, as far as that feeling, it probably took, you know, the rest of that year. And it's worth it, training, even the conference, and, you know, the first conference I went to, before I started to feel, okay, I see where this is going, and I feel a part of this now.
Thanks. So for our two newest board members, what do you think are some of the things that we're doing well to welcome members, kind of based on what the author was saying?
Well, I mean, I know, leading up to running and then even post, you know, getting on the board, I, several of you have reached out individually, especially early on, to say, you know, to make sure that, you know, if I had any questions, I could, I could safely float them out there and like, in a safe space, just claim my ignorance about whatever was going on. You know, so I think, I think that's a, a big part of it, and I know that's, that's a little more about the relationships and the personal rather than kind of anything we do as a collective board. But several of, I've had several of those conversations, so I think, you know, and they've been very intentional. And so, you know, I take, I, I like that, I mean, that's been, I've appreciated that very much, to, to be able to just be ignorant. And what, it's that beginner's mind, right? I mean, that's the phrase I like to use rather than ignorant, but that's what it is, right? I don't know something, and, and so embracing that and being able to ask questions and, and, you know, it's been a good, that's something that we've, I think, collectively done really well.
I agree, that really helped. Me also, when I had questions, I could just call Mike, and be like, oh yeah, this is, oh, is there, even when the text rate thing was going on, I didn't know, you know, when it was just happening right after. But they had a meeting with me, they explained it to me, and I just felt like everyone took their time to understand, so it really helped me.
I like the fireback I created, I think that was with Dr. Brock, for sure.
Yeah.
And I, I took one, I came and sat, I was my president, so I sat in when we were introducing it to people, and I was like, I don't believe these, because I didn't really do that. But it just lays out so much stuff that used to take forever to, you know, to get access to, so I appreciate that.
I, I do appreciate that Dr. Brock was super intentional the last time we brought new board members in. And we talked quite a bit about how we wanted to do that differently, in meeting with folks beforehand and meeting with folks afterward. And do you think that we, we're giving better talk than we have to be more on that? So I'm just gonna copy over to page eighty-two. Which one resonates most with you and Mike? We're just gonna hear.
Okay, yeah, this is, I think this is the most important one that I've seen in the book so far. But number five, we committed to deep learning and being clear, that you cannot be a part of something you cannot understand.
Yeah.
That is so.
That's yours? Okay.
Mine too.
Okay, it wasn't mine, so I'll give something different, but I, you know, you might all be surprised it's number four, right? Have a strategic focus and understanding and being proud of the awesome responsibility of setting direction for the district. I mean, I, there are, I mean, there's probably every board meeting, or at least, at least once a month, where I say, I am glad that I am here part of trying to slog through COVID response and return to, you know, return to learn, or whatever the big thing is, is that it is an awesome responsibility, and it takes a lot of strategic, big-picture focus, and that's something that I appreciate.
I was with Mike.
Okay, Kenny?
What'd you say, Jordan?
I was with Mike.
Jordan's like, I'm with Mike, which one was that?
Everybody's on number five, all right.
I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say, choose to govern professionally, it will determine your legacy. Most important, develop a governance mindset, that's our job. Kenny? One? Be patient. I like that. Yeah, again. It's a great list, so.
Yep.
Something for us to kind of refer back to. And, and I, you know, we did mention tonight that folks that want to join the school board can sign up in December, because there will be elections, again, fingers crossed, in April. And so there may be new people coming onto our board, and so we really need to continue to think, how can we be welcoming, how can we make sure that they have the information that they need? Because every board is a new board.
And how can new people even learn about it and get involved enough to be aware of what it would be to be on a school? That's one of the things that I think about.
Well, thanks for the conversation.
Thanks for leading it, thanks for the questions.
All right, stay tuned, I'm gonna, I wanna look at the rest of the chapters we have left in our timeline between now and, you know, as we start into 2022. So I will print out a message with kind of breakdown for how we're gonna break down the rest of the chapters. Put a pin in it, and I will get back with you soon about our next book study conversation. All right, looking back into our agenda, we are on section five, citizen comments limited to agenda items. Do we have any citizen comments to attend to? If you do not, so we move on to section six, and this says Mrs. President, it's not Mrs. President, it's Mrs. Simon. That's from me, how are you?
Hello?
Second read.
Second read, so do you have any revisions or do you?
No revisions, no edits, came through clean, which is awesome, and excited to, to get your approval.
Perfect. So the administration recommends a nice move that the board approved of perkyong as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Motion to carry seven to zero.
That was easy.
Section seven, Mr. McNeil.
All right, so we got the English language learner's program evaluation.
Hello.
Hi.
Just by myself tonight, no Andrew, he had soccer practice. So just wanted to point out from our report that even with the craziness of COVID last year, we did make gains in our overall access scores, and Rogers made big gains from the previous year. So that's something we are celebrating this year. And as far as our goals for this year, we have all worked very hard to make our schools inviting to all and hanging our flags and various things in our buildings and to welcome people. We feel like we've been able to do that, and so now we want to take the next step. And so one of our big goals for this year is for each building to devise a plan for how to involve parents, not just that our buildings look nice when people come in, because we feel like we, we are there, we want to go that next step. So each building, instead of mandating like, hey, we, every building's going to do this, each building is going to come up with their own plan that. Each building is going to come up with their own plan that works for their building for how to involve parents. So that's one of our main goals for, for this year. So that was all really I wanted to highlight. Um, but did you have any questions for me?
I really appreciate your analysis and conclusion section. Good breakdown. I still think it's just such a good way to read a paragraph and get a little appreciation to what's going on.
Great.
One question I had is, are we seeing a variation between the cohorts as they go through the grades with different classes?
Um, what do you mean?
Are we seeing larger pockets of, uh, challenges there or is it? I remember ten years ago, there'd be like a, like a chunk of, like a one grade that was specifically challenged.
Right.
Really needing help. And then you have two grades and then another one that was, is it more evenly distributed? Or are we seeing those kinds of pockets still are?
I, I don't feel like we're seeing those pockets. You know, uh, when the kids get to our building, like if they have started at Manier, we tell our kids, our goal for them is to test out before they get to middle school. That's just kind of the goal that we have set at our building. And I think that you can see in those numbers, um, when you look, we added the percentages this year on page three. You can see the percentages are larger at.
Yeah.
Manier and Gach, and then they drop off because I think we are testing those kids out before they leave primary schools and go to the middle school. So I don't feel like, um, at least in the six or so years that I've been doing ELL, I agree. And there have been times where you're like, oh, this class is more involved than other classes, but I don't feel like I've been seeing that.
I have one question on page eight. It's an appendix where it's showing the thirty-four languages represented and there's a really nice color wheel.
Yes.
But English is one of the ones that's on there and that confused me.
So we do have, we have some, so that chart is in elevation, our new program that we got a couple of years ago. And so that pulls all of, um, it pulls directly from Tyler. So if, when parents signed up, if that's what they put, that's how it got dropped over there.
How interesting.
I thought it just meant they were, it was UK books.
Putting Z's and S's instead of U's.
So what could happen is like if mom filled out the registration form, she might've put English. But then if like, if they started at Manier and Andrew and Amy, or a classroom teacher said, hey, can you look at this kid? And they went back and talked to parents and found out, oh, wait, there is another language in the background. And then we added them, but it already said English. Yeah.
Any other questions? Administration recommends an ISO move that the board approved the English language learners program evaluation as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Is it the second? Any more, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Any extensions? And passes seven to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, section eight, finance, Mr. Curry.
All right, um, we've got the monthly financial statement and talking about our budget revision and some ESTR three funds updates. We'll start with the monthly financial statements. Anything to highlight?
I don't really have anything to highlight.
Yeah, okay. Yep. The line chart is going in the right direction. All right, budget revision number one.
Yeah, so I'll touch on, uh, a couple of things for budget revision number one. I will stick, uh, be fairly brief with it just because we have some other things. And because the, most of the changes that are included in budget revision one are things that you can be aware of already. Um, we've talked about them and they're just now making their way into the budget. So, um, really I'll focus on, I guess, page five or six of the, um, the one that breaks down revenue and expenditure. Changes. So really, uh, the biggest things going on here on the revenue side are SIR and current taxes. So current taxes, we just adjusted our budget slightly to match, um, kind of our anticipated revenue from the tax rates being set, uh, in September. So that's, that's all that change was. And you can see it was a one point three seven percent increase. So that's really just the conservative approach we took when doing the budget in June. We had our final assessment numbers and kept, just made that up. Um, SIR three, again, this is something that we're gonna talk about next, so timing's a little bit funny on it. But, um, our, our plan that we're about to talk about includes some capital projects. Uh, that includes paying for the other little bit less than half, it's probably like forty-five percent of the performance contract project at high school. So the majority of that is paid for with SIR two funds. Part of it could be paid with just regular capital projects funds. Will be to, to pay for a amount of SIR three instead of our, our regular capital projects funds. And also building automation, which has made its way to about forty percent of our district at this point. Uh, we're gonna start trying to capture the other sixty percent probably starting with Manier. Um, so those two items, uh, have been added to the budget, both on the revenue side and on the expenditure side. As we talked about that, that, those, uh, that revenue will be on a reimbursement basis. And since that, uh, that, uh, performance contract, the project is almost complete, almost entirely paid out. As soon as we get everything kind of in order with SE, we'll be requesting reimbursement for part of that. And then, uh, we anticipate moving into building automation in Manier probably over the winter. So those are two things that we think we can complete within this fiscal year. The remainder of those SIR three funds will, will more than likely be in future, future years. On the expenditure side, uh, touched on the SIR three funds. The other things are all, um, kind of COVID related, semi-COVID related salaries and benefits. We did add some additional, uh, support staff at our, I mean, our elementary level to help class coverage. And then, uh, there were some virtual, virtual learnings if we had students who opted to, to learn at home. Uh, we are offering some additional services this year that we haven't in years past. So those things, uh, have been added since the budget was approved in June. And then, uh, wanted to note that, uh, for bond funds, we had a little bit in our budget, uh, when it was approved in June. But we actually made the last payment of bond funds within the last couple of days of last fiscal year. So we took that out. It was just a timing thing. We weren't sure how exactly that would work with the retaking all project. Um, and then that service has been adjusted to, um, reflect our upcoming diffusions that we've talked about as well.
Well, it's nice to see that increase too.
Yes, yes. Trying a little more, uh, trying to, what we're trying to push off doing is another diffusion for as long as possible, which I think might be two years, but two is better than one.
We just like to use the word diffusions.
Definitely. And spelling, that's my favorite.
Right.
Phenomenal diffusions.
Um, so really that's all I wanted to cover with this. Uh, those are the, the main changes with it. You know, and like I said, a lot of it are things that we all knew about and then talked about at previous meetings. It was just putting it all kind of in place and doing the reporting on it.
I think it'll be interesting to see over time the virtual learning, certainly a lot of that, I think, people who stayed home this year. But also, um, things have changed in terms of students being able to access MoCap or something like that. So over time, I think that number, I mean, we would expect that not to be that high, but certainly we are gonna spend more money on it now that we're offering it more broadly to our students. So I think it's interesting to see.
Any other comments? The administration recommends an ISO move the approval of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget revision number one as presented. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Mike? All right, any other discussion? All right, all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes seven to zero. And another information item on the SIR three funds.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take that. And one of the things I wanted to follow up with, we did a thought exchange, which is kind of our second round of, of input, I would say. We did a survey in July that was a little bit about return to learn. So there was a lot of questions in there about health and safety measures, but also in that July survey were ideas on, what are some of the priorities that you think maybe the district should consider when we're putting the federal relief funds to use? And so that was kind of our initial input gathering. And it was sort of that second round to drill down a little bit more specific because that information yielded some, some general ideas. But we're, we're really wanting to little by little get into specific line items. And so the thought exchange was meant to try to drive a little bit more certainty around that. So I wanted to make sure, uh, thanks to Erica for putting together kind of a, a summary of those top thoughts. You can, you can see that. I kind of poked that as a separate item. Uh, the other item that I put that I'll call the update was really more of, I guess, a, a proposal. If, if agreeable on how to move forward to getting more and more specific. I think overwhelmingly the input was, we feel like staff have gone above and beyond, regardless of whether you're a certified or a support staff member. So what can we do to, uh, retain them and look at competitive wages? And then also, is there anything additional we can do for the work they've put in last year and they're continuing to put in this year? So sort of two ways to handle things. One is making, you know, any corrections we can to be as competitive as possible. But then also, are, are there, is there anything we can do to, uh, to, to help them, uh, this year or in the near future? And so I think that's really the two things that I took away and certainly don't disagree that those should be considerations. So I think really what my next step was is to provide, uh, what is the best way to handle that? Or what, what are some ways we can consider handling that? And certainly, um, one of the items that we wanted to look at is, should we use federal funds to do that? And what we found is that although districts were trying to do some of those things, a lot of them weren't necessarily using specifically SIR funds. And so that was something we heard that came through in the survey. I asked Steve to follow up with the business, um, officials association. So we didn't necessarily hear from all twenty-two other districts, but we heard from the majority of them. And, and not a lot of them were specifically using SIR funds. They were in essence, using some of their district funds. And I think that probably the reason they're doing that, it gives them a little bit more latitude to include as many staff as possible. So secretaries, custodians, teachers, uh, staff assistants, because there's just a, a little bit more room to do what you think is right. As opposed to always having to check and see, well, does this fall within a category that we will have to document and, and meet certain expectations? So I think that might be why a lot of districts felt like, let's do this through a, a different pathway. But then how are we gonna free up some of those funds to do that? We'd be putting those SIR funds to use on other projects that maybe then give us, um, a, a little bit more latitude to, to use money differently within the district. So that's kind of at the heart of what I'm thinking we need to consider is, um, certainly putting those SIR funds to good use. But thinking about what are some projects that we would have had to have found some way to fund those? And they are also very pandemic related. So when you're talking about air quality, that's something that you can improve for a long time. Not just because we're in a pandemic and we're trying to do those improvements, but that will benefit staff and students for a long, long time. And just those things that are gonna endure and then also making sure each building is getting taken care of. So it's not like we're just doing that for one building. We're gonna improve those things for all of our schools that kids and staff work in. And those are very tangible things. Those are things that definitely meet, um, requirements that are good ideas for, to put that money to use. And likewise, we do have a little room for getting more staff input on, uh, how to address learning loss. So one of our ideas was to allow, uh, principals and staff members to come up with, if, if this were money that we could put towards salary and benefits, um, how would we, how would we use additional staff in your building? And really giving them a lot of latitude to put, to bring that recommendation to us. And so certainly we have to make sure that those ideas are allowable and that we could recommend the, that to you guys to fund through this mechanism. But that's not something we also have to act on right away. We can plan for that next year. And if the money allows, we could even do that for two years in a row if there's extra help that's needed. So that was a way to really kind of give them the parameters. Here's about how much, um, we could allocate to your building. And then we can, we can use their recommendations to really drive what ultimately lands on, on, you know, on the board to approve. But we did try to put some structure to, what would some of those capital improvements be? So you kind of see a line item list of what some of those capital improvements would be. Um, and then the third item I wanna go over, so we've kind of outlined more specifics. And then certainly this is, um, a year where we are going through collective bargaining. So we are going to engage with staff members about what are ideas they have about what we should be doing in the future. And, and so it's just, it's good timing, I feel, for, for this to come to fruition where we're not in a pinch. Where maybe we're not due to have collective bargaining for another two or three years. I think we'd probably be bringing something different forward, uh, to you. But since we are kind of due to engage in that, I feel like it's, it's a good timing to, to be able to do that. And, um, I think people can see how, well, how are you gonna kind of free up some, some funds to, to try, to try to take care of some of the things that we might think are, are well deserved? I think we're hoping to help people see that, that by putting money to use elsewhere, we will have the latitude to strongly consider. And also put in there some of the things we did the last time we collectively bargained. So people see that we do have a track record of doing some things that, uh, so it's not out of bounds to think that we could probably promise that we are gonna make progress over several years on being competitive. And also, um, we did an additional payment last time as, as part of our agreement. So it's not out of bounds to think that that is something we would never do, uh, because it, we do have a track record of doing that and considering that. So I think all of those things should hopefully help prove that, that we're serious about wanting to, uh, to take this on and engage it. At the same time, I don't wanna presume that you guys should just approve this tonight and we'll just tell people it's done. I'd like, for a little bit more time to help explain this to people about how, if we approach this, this way. Is there anything that, that you're apprehensive about? Or does this sound like, uh, uh, I guess you'd say a good faith way to honor the input that we've got? And then also provide specifics that people can really wrap their arms around so that they know exactly how are you gonna be taking care of these funds? How do you intend to try and take care of some of these other things that we think should be a top priority? We're, we're trying to make that as clear as possible so folks aren't, aren't, aren't unsure about when this is gonna happen, how it's gonna happen. And so I'd like to get some more feedback on whether people think that, uh, that's agreeable or, or is that amenable moving forward? And then that way I can report back to you what was some of the feedbacks. So you're the first group that's seeing this. And so if you don't see any big red flags, if you don't see any, anything that, that is just glaring that we might wanna change, I'd like to then spend the next couple of weeks, um, make, getting staff familiar with this, um, parents familiar with it. And then see what they, what they think about this approach. And then, and ultimately I do, would like to, to bring a proposal to you that's kind of informed by what people are saying about it and then have you approve it. I would say possibly a month from now. I think that would be a good timetable to, uh, second meeting of November to be able to have that input. Let people put eyes on this, um, you know, talk, talk to them about it. And then possibly get, get some of these things settled so that when we do, um, you know, perfect world, when we do start engaging in collective bargaining, there'll be a clear understanding of what, what we're trying to accomplish from all parties involved. You know, we, we really can, I think our, our agreement kind of suggests we really shouldn't start earlier than December. So I think once we get into kind of December, it's fair game to, you know, to, to decide on some dates. But typically it has been in January when we've started. So I think that's probably a good, a, a good timeframe to shoot for. But that is certainly something that we can also start engaging with and maybe start getting that lined up so that that's also clear and not, not fuzzy about, well, when, when will collective bargaining start? When do we hope to, when do we hope to wrap that up? We can certainly try and continue to do some work on that as well to, to make that as firm as possible.
I really appreciated how this just so directly leads to the thought exchange. It was like, I read the thoughts and I thought, oh, what would we do with that? And then I went to the next slides and really had laid it out well. We've answered questions about, um, the collective bargaining and what we had done last time. And I, I believe this was a great report.
So I think while you can certainly look at what other districts have done, I think the one thing we've learned, while there's some common themes, anytime you talk about compensation, um, it, it seems like, well, shouldn't districts be about exactly the same? And the answer is no. Uh, some districts don't do multi-year dears, deals. They don't, they just don't. It's, it's every year. And so, uh, sometimes they can't do much for their staff. So, you know, when you only give, say, a one percent raise, it does make you feel compelled to try to do other things because, you know, you maybe came up a little short, um, on one year. And so there's, there's all reasons why some districts may, um, approach things differently. And so you really do have to, to kind of look at, it's rarely an apples to apples comparison. That doesn't mean you can't get, get good ideas from other districts and how they've successfully done things. You just also have to look at how similar or different is their position compared to, you know, compared to where Afton is. And so I, I feel like we can, we can go into this in a very productive, in a very productive way and, uh, positive. And so I, I feel like we can, we can go into this in a very productive, in a very productive way and a positive outlook.
Thank you. Any other comments from anyone? That was for information.
All right. One question, I think I already know the answer, but I just think it, it just needs to be said. When you start talking about, um, one-time money somewhere within staffing, that's a, staffing is a long-term expense. With one, you know, it's kind of, it becomes that hard. I know you're thinking about that, but it becomes a hard thing to, to navigate. And, and we, we know of districts that have gotten in trouble doing that. And we certainly, uh, I'm sure you're already thinking of it, but I just wanted to say that. That we're, you know, look at it in those, all those angles, it's hard.
Yep, you're absolutely right. And that's why, you know, we've, we've tried to put, and, and the, the good news about this particular process, we've got a little more time to put thought into using the money. Whereas the last two rounds were really meant to go directly to things that the district is falling short. So, uh, Chromebooks for K through two students and families. Like we, we didn't have that covered, uh, at the beginning of the pandemic. So we immediately put those dollars to use. And now we've got a little bit more time to think about, um, all of those things. About like if we are going to put this into additional positions, well, you know, we also have to have an idea of, um, when, when might we not be able to fund those anymore? And likewise, if we're putting some, some dollars into collective bargaining, we hope we can sustain that. You know, but let's make decisions that we think we can sus- sustain over the, over the long haul for sure.
There is a really good point that you make about the, the tightening of this being much more amenable to decision-making. And some of the previous things we've seen in the past, that's, that's good.
Well, and to, I guess, add on to that, a question, I mean, staffing doesn't necessarily have to mean, I mean, could, could it mean a, a, a variety of things where it's, you know, it's temporary programs? It's temporary staffing to, you know, for those two-year, you know, to address the learning loss directly related to COVID? Kind of like define a timeframe to it. That isn't necessarily meant to establish a, a, an increased staffing level that we would have to carry on in perpetuity. We could structure it that way or, or the programs or whatever you're looking at could, could, could be that, couldn't they?
Yep, absolutely. And that's why we kind of want to, while we're, we want to give our, our buildings some decision-making power. It, that also has to be understood, those decisions, when, when that money is gone. So then that's, that's when that, um, probably you can't just presume that'll, that'll go on forever. And, and so we, we want to make sure that they're, um, they kind of have that lens as they're thinking about what, what might be good decisions on how to do that. And, um, and so that's really, I think, kind of how you have to look at any S R money that's going towards salaries and benefits. You sort of have to look at it through that lenses. It, it's going to run out at some time. And if you are adding positions, you may not be able to carry them forward forever. Whereas a lot of things we try to do through collective bargaining, we try to make sure that we think we can sustain those things. And that's why we're doing it. And, um, and so I think that, that's a good lens to talk about those things through is what, what's sustainable.
And, but asking the buildings, I think, too. I mean, some of the best staffing decisions we've made have come from things the buildings said that we, we could use more staff for this. And it's really helpful. It's great to ask them what they think.
And I, and I think they'll be able to use this year to really put some thought into what, what are they seeing? So we've got a quarter under our belt, we're getting into second quarter. So what has emerged that would, um, that would spark ideas that, uh, that we can, we can support?
Yeah, I think what you just said made me think that, uh, to the extent that we can kind of grounded in the data of, you know, what did we lose during the height of the pandemic? Where are we, what have, uh, just to be kind of data-driven on, on that, I think would be just helpful as we understand and start to say, yeah, these are, this is the, this is what each of the buildings is kind of putting forth and why. And having sort of the why be not just an, and kind of an anecdotal learning loss kind of thing, but to kind of demonstrate that and what, what are we going to be tackling with that? Would just be, I think, helpful for everyone to understand, um, how that, how that's being done. It was really good. Thank you.
Good?
Yes.
May I ask? All right. So we have even on section nine, personnel items, Mr. Livingston.
Excuse me. Personnel is actually looking good. Looks like we're hiring, we're not losing anybody at this point in time, so.
I thought the same thing.
Either we are above and on base or we just got, you know, this was just one of those clean days. So it looks like we're, it's a, uh, two custodial positions, one full-time and then one substitute, I believe is the way that I'm reading that. Anything further on this?
I, I would just say that, you know, schools are not, um, you know, insulated from what you hear everywhere about staffing shortages and custodians is one of those. And so we continue to make progress. And so we've been operating all year with a shortage of custodians. And I think this will get us up to the level that we had hoped to be at, you know, all year. And so to, to Jordan's point, let's hope we don't see any resignations and things like that. So let's, let's maintain that level. But, you know, certainly where we start and where we end the year, we talk about how we hope it's different. Where we started, and this is one of those areas where we just had to keep after it. And so, uh, and so like I said, when you hear staffing shortages, don't think that education is just, um, you know, absolved from that. It's, it's, everybody's feeling it. And yet we're still not just throwing up our hands and saying, uh, we give in. We're, we're really, every month, every day, we're trying to work on it and figure out what we can do to get these positions filled.
Uh, anything else from the board side? The administration recommends and I so moved the approval of the staffing changes as presented. Do I have a second? Any other further questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries seven to zero. I'm going to let you, because it doesn't really say, but I'm figuring Mrs. Gaby, this sounds really cool.
Yeah, so this is just an item we want to bring to your attention that, um, it, it's an additional offering that we have the good fortune to, uh, turn around to our students, uh, as it is being funded, um, by one of our alumni. And so I just wanted to make sure you knew that, that we are going to have staff members that support this. And so they're also supporting the compensation for those staff members who are going to work, um, outside. And, and really this is an extracurricular opportunity. So it's focused on grades three through five and six through eight, uh, really looking at computer science and coding skills. So, uh, very, very fortunate to have this brought to our attention. Uh, so thanks to Mary Jenta, our career and college counselor, who's also very involved with the Afton Education Foundation. And then Marilyn Allen, they really sort of spearheaded with me having a meeting, getting familiar with what this is. It's basically an after-school club, if you will, or an extracurricular opportunity targeted at upper elementary and middle school. And then, um, having the good fortune to have someone fund this. And so, uh, that's, that's always nice too, when someone's willing to, to say, you know, we'll pick up the tab for, for it. So really we just need your help to operationalize it. And so, um, those two did a great job of, you know, of, of making this come to fruition and really carrying it through to the finish line in regards to what does this organization need? And then likewise, do we have staff members that would be willing to, uh, to run these sessions? And so you can kind of see I provided some information on what the sessions look like, what the content looks like. But in general, it's getting kids more exposure to computer science, coding, things of, things of that nature. So just informational item, wanted you to know about it since, um, since it is something additional that we're doing. But the good news is we're, we're getting funding be- behind it, so.
All right, like Dr. Brock said, this was for information. Uh, nine point oh-three, we have a transportation update with no notes. Uh, Dr. Daughtry, please.
Yeah, just thought I'd talk through them. Uh, so we have two new routes that started today. So essentially we had our first day of school again this year. Things went as smoothly as you expected them to go. And you introduced new routes and you had to reroute kind of your existing ones to make those work. Essentially the raw numbers basically boiled down to, we were transporting close to eight hundred students up to this point. We were at, at essentially two hundred more students on the buses.
That's great.
So, you know, we're getting closer to that number that we were at in the past. I'd say if you take a look at like high school especially, we're pretty close to transporting any student that had wanted to get a route to school. So we have one driver that's in the training pipeline. Obviously that would be the goal, try to add that route once that driver is done training. Again, that'll make it for the third.
First day.
First day. Pretty here. Uh, so we'll see how those smooth out. For the most part, listening to the radio this morning, it was a lot less chatter than actually what I expected. So I think that's a good sign.
It's good news.
All right. Also for informational, that should wrap up section nine.
All right, section ten, citizen comments. Do we have any citizen comments? All right, then we are ready to move on to our school improvement section, which is the strategic planning workshop. Let's take five if that's acceptable to everyone. And then we will reconvene for our workshop.
All right. Yeah, right?
Hey, I'm Eric, Eric, uh, so this is Max, yeah. My other Kayla graduated from my, two years ago. Yeah, so. Oh, no problem. I, I've never been, uh, attended this school before. You know, you saw that, I've always been on the block, and you know, we see this, uh, sometimes, you know, sometimes you just, uh, operate.
Usually we have a few more people here right now that's kind of in academy. Fewer people are coming. And then we do watch them, we need to know how people are, that, 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 that. So I do appreciate you coming.
No, no problem. But you guys.
It only broke once.
This is where they are. So obviously the first, the first few, like, every two, like, I do, that's kind of our schedule.
You guys want a job? I always have one job in the relationship.
But the thing is, with this job, no matter how, like, nobody's. So you really get.
I'd be happy to retire from that.
As much as you try.
But now you've got that fancy hat.
You're a good teacher. Whatever you do, it's like, you are awesome.
So I found out today that one of my employees. Now that you.
So why I don't care? Everyone's okay.
Everybody's behaving.
Uh, we have one minute, two minutes. Two minutes.
Yeah, I had a hard time recognizing people with my school.
Okay, well, I mean, it was like when Adam was little, and he's thirty-three, so.
I finally pushed together myself, but it was very sad.
Great. I was just saying Amy Tote was the reading specialist years ago, before she became.
Okay.
Yeah, so. And so when, when I saw her, I was like, I'm going to lead a big discussion in front of reading specialists. Look at me too. Can she just get up and do it for me? All right, strategic planning. Yeah. We're back, we're excited.
We're back.
You gotta capitalize.
Okay.
We're going to move into our workshop, which is just a chance for the board to interact about specific topics and sometimes in a more formal way. Um, tonight we're talking about strategic planning. And I am going to turn it over to Dr. Brock, who has prepared something for us tonight. But I do want to just update the group on where we are with mission, vision, and core values. Thanks everyone for filling out the Google Doc, it was really helpful. And we made a lot of quick progress just with the one Google Doc. We really were able to hone in on, um, what to move forward with. I think we can do some more fine-tuning with language. Um, and since we, we knew this was going to be a long meeting tonight, we want to give due attention to what Dr. Brock has prepared for us. We're going to save the sort of end of our conversation for the next meeting. And that gives us enough time to, I think, put out one more Google Doc, again, to just fine-tune the language a bit more. So that we, when we come to the table next time, we really know what it is, we want to kind of wrap up our conversation around. So be on the lookout. Um, I will do the same where I send a text message to just let everybody know that there's an email for them to connect to Google form.
And I won't be here at the next meeting. So you'll get probably some thoughts and an email from me to just sort of give everybody my thoughts before you guys get together on the second.
Any questions about it? I don't want to shut, shut down the conversation, but again, I want to, I want to use our time tonight for what Dr. Brock. Any other question? All right, Dr. Brock, I'm going to go with you.
Okay, um, so we're going to get up here in just a minute, kind of very similar to what you guys did last time. Ask you to get into pairs, probably one group of three. And then really ask you to brainstorm around pillar four. And so, uh, pillar four, we put some, we put a sentence that we kind of called a commitment statement. And that was generated twofold. One, from some input we got through focus groups and a survey. But then certainly also we looked at our current strategic plan. So in our current strategic plan, this is, pillar four is sort of collapsing governance, which was a standalone governance, continuous improvement. And then also resource management was kind of a standalone section in our current plan. So we're really just taking those two and kind of putting them together. So that we look at governance, resource management, continuous improvement as something that is, uh, very much a, um, a board of education, um, you know, focus, working with the superintendent. And so that's why really interested in getting your thoughts around this, um, you know, as opposed to, well, why, why are we asking everybody about this? I feel like we kind of already did that. We, we, we had an opportunity to get everyone's thoughts on, on this subject. But we also can lean on what we've done in our current strategic plan as a way to, to sort of, um, not deviate too much from, from how we've typically handled this. And so really what I don't, what I think we're lacking just a little bit, I think we've got some ideas on things we could try to, uh, uh, improve over a one-year time period. But we're really looking for, what are some things that you think are more vision statements? So in five years, so over the next five years, when you think about the topics of resource management, uh, governance and continuous improvement, what are things that come to mind? So I'm just going to ask you to put that on a posted note. So no more than one idea per posted note. It doesn't have to be, uh, an officially a complete sentence. But I would also ask that maybe you put more than one word. So we kind of know what, what is it that you think would be a, a good long-range vision for? Really for the board superintendent to work on together. A- a- as we think about some of those key responsibilities of, you know, governing the district, uh, making sure financially we're in good, good shape and putting resources to good use. And then likewise, when we think of a system, uh, what are the expectations around improving? You know, wh- what, what comes to mind when you think about what should every department, every school be, be called to do when it comes to improving? That's what we kind of think of as our system is, is that we, we talk a lot about continuous improvement. But let's put, what is the action? What is it that we really expect people to commit to doing? And so that's kind of what I'm looking for and, uh, asking for your help with. And then after, we're going to spend seven minutes at one, one area. And even though you're going to switch to a different area, it's still the same topic. You're just going to get the benefit of seeing what are the people in front of us say? And then maybe, maybe that sparks a new idea. Or maybe you want to put an exclamation point or a, you know, a check mark like that, that one's right on the mark. So it's, it's not like a different topic at each station. It's the same topic. It's just that now you get to read, what did the, what did the folks in front of us say? And then, um, and then go from there. And then likewise, you get to talk with the person you're paired up with to, uh, to kind of see what they're thinking. And then likewise, you get to talk with the person you're paired up with to, uh, to kind of see what they're thinking. So with that, um, I believe we've got everything set up over there, and let's see if you wanna scroll down one, you know, one more where, think of this as your prompt. So as a, a Board of Education member, what would you like to see happen and achieve over the next five years for our system? And those are kind of three areas that you can kind of think of. If you think I've missed something, or there's something that's not specifically called out, by all means, infuse that in there, but that was, that was just to give you some context of some things you might think about that might drive some of these, uh, long-range vision statements. So with that, um, we've got pens, posted notes over there, so if you guys want to arrange your groups and then pick a table, I will keep time, and, uh, and then, uh, we'll probably be done in twenty-one minutes.
Can I just make a suggestion that we don't pair up the same way we did on the last? Just, just for variety's sake? I don't know.
That's a great suggestion. Pair us up, I don't even remember who I was with.
Well, I wanted to go down that way, so.
Okay. There you go.
Who was it?
I was.
It was so long ago.
It was so long ago.
I've been with.
I was with Bridget and Patricia.
I think I was.
No, no. Patricia and I were together.
I, we were together.
Bridget and Shell, or someone's.
No, it was.
I was with Shell.
See, nobody remembers.
Yeah, that's the.
And go.
I'm loving it.
We'll be in the group of three, how about that?
Okay, it's a little heavy.
So.
Okay, so we just decided.
Do the college.
No, help you.
Most resource management.
I've not been successful with all this reading stuff in tonight's meeting. Maybe I failed to.
Just get the news improvement.
Fat markers. Fat markers. Now I know, that's the other. All right. So I just. But not just to the research.
I'm good. You have to take.
I know.
It's true. No, it's fine, especially now that I have. The separate thing is hopefully you're second. Or answer emails or whatever. I think it's a little bit. No, I need some glasses. Yeah. No. Chain. This is when we said. So.
I think, I think so. Probably, we could not necessarily. I would give that efficiency. We're young, concept. They are so young. But it works a bit, but not. They hold their bags. I wish they're not pro, but they're not. I had an eye on it, I didn't know what it was. Just say ponder. Little eyes. The monitor on that thing is crazy.
Sorry. Oh. I went too far.
And so. For that. Yeah. Right. All right, I took a new one. Those are nice. There's a lot of. We're part of these. We're too welcome. We'll spend a couple of years. Everything that's just named. Stewardship, I mean, just words like. When I hear this. My. My. I haven't. I haven't seen it. You've seen it, it's two more. I wouldn't drive. I do something. I actually think about maybe this one where they get, there's like two magical safety. It's awesome. It's awesome. Do you really? The one Orlando. You're. You're. You've come to the. Yeah. And I don't. You don't make your question. When you want. Does that count? Then any answer? I'm not sure that counts.
I was. I'm sending.
Or when, whatever. I mean, I need to. Maybe. I'm looking. Everybody takes a turn. Everybody does. Once you're beyond it, you don't get it. I, I. And the people who should be like, yeah. Right. Maybe you're honest. It's. Right. I mean, they're better though. All right. Here, I mean, move, maybe one station to your right. And other. Go back. Then you find. We'll get to see what the next group will be. We'll be on. All of the.
I need by that.
It's like. Put a plus five. It's easy, you're starting to. That was. Also, feel free to continue to add. Gas mileage. More study. But mine, there's no curvy, there's energy up there. A sound passenger car. In the back. Zero. They were all. Cheaper gas. So I found that. If you're wired. Chris, there isn't a parking.
I'm not.
That's why he's not allowed to park up.
No, I try to. And I'm bored.
You'll find the ass, if you're not trying to be. So we're actually telling you.
He'll read the volume, uh, under age one. Right. But I can, I can barely walk. Right. He's really such a giant. That's what, that's what drivers are.
Well, that's what we usually would.
We'll be home.
Yeah, she did.
Hold on. Sorry, sorry, Dr. Brock. I didn't know. You just be.
I know. Cause both do.
The new car. The old car is still on your face. Like you have a science. It's on your body.
Yeah. His.
The. That would be a sign. That's right.
He, he parked next to my. What happened?
Right. I was like. There'll be.
What's scary?
Yeah.
Great. Her first week she's already in the back.
I've heard that, um, all the major guys, they did a spot right next to the entrance to the. To the bus area. None of them want to park there because they say. They have multiple tickets.
Somebody asked you to tailgate.
Yeah, so they have the tailgate, so they're like, we won't park there, so I. You know what? Are you?
You'll know too, I bet you'll think. Have you ever been in it long?
I've had it. I've had it for nine years, but I drove. I had a lease in the middle of it, and my wife drove it.
That's why I see you driving.
And now it's. I had a Fusion for a while.
Three or four.
I was just. Really surprising. Are you? Here, I have. No.
I wanted to get. He took, he took his. But.
Hey. I don't know. People. I don't. From. My next car is. But that's, that's not because of support. So just because of.
You love it. I wanna be a Ford. Same lady or a Mazda, which is. That's why I guess. Okay. I wanna. Ah, shit. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, like, yeah, it's like, I should be. Sometimes. Probably.
Yeah.
The baby is born.
I really.
Yeah. All right. It's like, I haven't been in a truck a long time. I guess. Yeah. New, it's small truck. It's small.
Small, that's larger.
Right there, the gas station. Where do you stand with?
It's a Ranger right there. I guess it'll miss one fifty once, but I hear you.
And they really are.
Yeah. The Maverick is probably the size of what like.
Size of Ranger was.
Maverick. Maverick, he's a Maverick.
Thanks for.
That's, that's all. I hear you.
Well, I guess I'll be.
Maverick.
Super.
Yeah.
Yeah. Actually, I probably would, although my kids, you know, what's funny is for that, my kids love super. Kids like that. I don't know. Ask a question. You get rid of that, I'm sure. I don't. So, but that's, that question would be.
Yeah.
I'm gonna. I'm gonna do the next one.
There's a, there's a.
I've been through that factory, like, the Zinlock did it again. It's a pretty impressive. I've been there, you've got a plant, a super plant there.
It's glorious.
My god.
Going to the BMW. For me. Yeah. They still have. Someday. Each other. Drive.
Oh, yeah.
They teach you all the things. I have, uh, I was like, uh, either quarters in Germany.
Or just ask a question. I love it. Same.
I'm not there.
I'm like, I go, I have a question. You're in. I want this.
Look at. Right.
And for you.
I mean, I'm ready.
All right, guys, we can like switch to the next one, so you can. Tell what I'm. We'll let that.
No, we do. No, we do. I have.
We talk, of course, they are. No. Those are really nice. You can go to any, any area.
What if getting a Ford?
Yeah, that's the only thing. Easier to create with that type of automobile and what it costs to keep around.
Just, uh, open your wallet. Man, I don't know. How is. How about you? Anything is that. They're wonderful. They're great. And I was a wonderful.
Yes, Sarah, but her reason. It's. It was awful. That was crazy. That's probably. Oh, yeah. And that's just emoji. That's right. That's just the.
Line first, get like a Jag or a Lamborghini, then you're talking. Double that.
This one's so interesting. In this. Oh, they're. Yeah. It's. I wonder if anything, they look really nice, but they're like. Just twenty-nine forty, but like so. They can't figure out how to make a summer. Every other car maker in the world can do that. But they are. Well. The. Or. Or. Or it's such, you can, I can count up three meters. Because that's where I get. Or the. Yeah. And so.
Can you make it at the. And we offer the wrong profession.
I did, I told you. There will be. And then instead of what. It's not gonna be nearly, it's not gonna be expensive. I don't know what kind of it's gonna be, but there will be. For. I'm gonna be seventy, and I'm gonna owe the sixty. And I'm gonna get to my soul. And. And I'm. Still in.
They'll be costing me.
Yeah.
But I'm. Absolutely. This is. There was a Ford. I don't remember what they had back in the eighties. I mean, I guess. Say. These. Good. And I was like. I was ever. So. I was one of them. I was like, I don't like it when I was in high school. And then I got a girl out. I don't like it. I don't. Yeah. I was trying to argue just sort of. Do you want to look at us?
It's nothing.
And they were ready to be like. They had, uh, you can find a way. That's like. Somebody's. Something's.
And people are saying. Sports.
Is. Just. They have the skills. They're all. And that's it. Now you can keep it as a hobby car. You don't. And it's unbraced, you can just park it. Now, and if they. I have.
Ten thousand miles.
No, but does it. Why is it.
I mean, my.
I'm. I'm seventy-four, I don't ever. I'll never kill it. The whole. I don't need to. I'll say you were actually on the. Well, just be on the.
What did you do? So. I have a. I have a key to the dollar. You know, how much you do on something new after. Or some work in. But.
I'm just saying. There is. I don't know.
No, I think they are. I'll, I'll, I'll. I'm interested in what I'm thinking. I'm just. I'm just. It's up to. Okay, I just.
So. Just going to work out. Or is he on? We have.
Yeah. No, you're talking. We're talking. No, that's, no, I'm saying, I just. There's a potential.
Oh, very. I won't. I'm. I'm sure.
I guarantee you that.
Um.
It's.
Oh, it is.
We both have that. And like, we. We have. You know, so. So you have. Just twenty-five shows.
There are. Stuff there.
Yeah.
I don't know. I'm not. I think. Well, that's. I think sort of. Somebody could work.
Yeah. 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 It will work.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't. There is. Of course.
I have. Yeah.
So. To the. Basically, that. I like, I like the new. I think. One, um, it's something.
I'm just.
I'm just.
All right. You don't want to start. To eat. Give her those. Okay.
All right. It's going to be.
All right, so. Yep. Making the.
Yep.
So. Problem is. So if you want to maybe, it's supposed to sell right. Then you have a really.
Also, my. Um, I would like to see more of the parent and mother. And young. And getting that.
Yeah, you just remember, yeah, so this one right here, um. Seeing this is almost like the system of design.
If we are. Part. It's a huge. In some ways. Very. Separated. It is. You know. Of which. It's a success. Especially. Maybe if this Supreme is returning in, you know, politics with the family, versus the politics in teacher or vice versa. Like. And have shares.
Yeah.
That's it. It's not. It's the. Like, that is not.
It's like. Not, not.
That's. There's one of the author there.
Sorry, so, yeah. So. We do. Well, it's not. I've got a.
All right.
So the other one. Yes, the other one, this one is, this one I would have a hard time writing down, so it's, it's really, really easy to be thought. The, the idea that we can take this. And that every kid is a buyer, be an entrepreneur, that every does fire. I mean, and I'm rings. That every day they wipe. Being, being too. Need, uh. If Lewis advised them toward the ideal, so they can have a real success. Both as a person and again feel. Feels that confidence that comes with giving something that they're really taking with credit. And that's, that feeling with the leverage for them is something that.
It just has to be. Flex space.
It's not that you can get bad job knowledge, you get all the two.
Yeah. Weird.
I'm just.
Yeah, well, that's true. I was, I was writing for all of us. I think we were just trying to understand. The same. We interpreted it a little bit differently. And so then started just to make a lot more questions for us. And we were thinking of this app. And. So part of, yeah, so more from like famous or, so really, but it's, it's part of me. It's one of those things you always, um, those buildings do that. If we were talking about separating. That would then, if it was always. In some way, or restoring the student, if it was the cups, would they burn. They're. I think that's what we were worried thinking. And so, for example, what is that support, how do we give to that student that helps the.
It's like. For training.
Are you doing that in some way that they have?
I would use it like a counselor.
It's like.
It's being social worker.
Right, or whatever.
Yeah.
So that would be. They're trying to. And they bought, uh. Lots of.
I'm just saying. I.
Some.
I just. And you. And. Stu. Yeah.
Uh, so you just. And. And. Or strategy. And engagement.
Yeah.
Throughout. Most of the time, so, um, so being in buildings and doing this business and, and making what's going on in the classroom. Real. Professors. And students. Classes. Sometimes very. It was so hard. And so I, just as an example, when we did.
It's gonna happen.
The. Last room. Um. I don't know. Anyway, so we talked about it here and we get, you know, reports and stuff, but then we see an action. And we see. And we see them. And they said, pretty. Oh, they have. So having to learn to add them to. Participated. Not in these. And really. To hear about what we're doing. And.
That place. Hmm. I like that just because it's also not. It was, I don't know, high school or.
I'd call.
Right. So it's. It's like.
Same thing here. So whoever started here, everyone else.
This is. Right here. Yeah. Yeah. Um. So. So. I. I'll start with succession now.
I wasn't sure. I mean.
So. And we. So. Ready. And getting their opportunities. So those are actually connected. Opportunity for. For. So. So. When you were in. So. So. It just. Because. We are not understanding. We should. Say. And. And you know, there should be. And. And.
Now space. I mean, don't look. But I understand that. I understand someone.
I. They don't.
They don't even have. I didn't. Before. I mean, I. I was.
And my first foray was, uh, the. Of course. I just.
Right.
Right.
And we have. And he's the.
Yeah.
He gets it.
Is that where you promote?
And we kind of talked about. You know, and we could, he had talked about. And we just had. We had to operate. Because. We tried.
Makes sense.
But I think we have to.
On.
On.
Keep proposing.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's. Hasn't. There are a lot. There's lots of. How we continue. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I have. So. One of them. Yeah. Girls. What? Gender. I shouldn't be. I know. If. If I can.
Oh, I could. Well. They thought I was.
Yeah. Well. It's like.
Teachers. And. The. We need to.
We have the freshman.
Straight forward, but. There's a financial. We don't.
Is there even?
No. We think we should. No. All right. So. Let's see that. And then. That's why. You know, too. And the irony is like, sort of getting from progress on that.
So can you say a little bit more about?
I don't. I have.
Oh, yeah.
About. So. Yeah.
Okay. So we see the.
I started out as. Say.
Well. Pretty.
And we would say, uh, playing. Our Lady of Pride. They had, uh. Sure. And.
Oh. Did you see that goal?
Oh. They're. They don't. Any. Future. And they're. They're all just. They're. They do it.
It's. In. So. So. Jeremy is one to accomplish. Yes.
Yours looks good.
The second. This is personal.
Just the numbers. All the numbers. Monkeys.
It's. Those. It's like. So.
And. Process.
And if they turn. And it comes. And. And it's doing something.
And.
They generate the power. Things like golf.
Yeah.
He's. And how they generate. It's so. They generate.
Yes, that is part of. Yeah. But mostly.
That was.
People.
Seriously. So. Of all. Trust. And. Just. Video. Twitter. I think. They announced the. It was something outside of. With a stick. And we're. They don't. She wanted to see a quote, and she thought, like, with the. Ten, twelve, ten minutes.
This is. Want. I can't. Of course. She.
They do look like they're. Which I think.
They're, they're. And some of the young players. I couldn't. There's some. So. I do.
Is that right?
She's got a home score. They have teams. Same, which is tough for.
And then our.
I mean, they had to react to like Colorado. As you hear, Colorado, just, just their speed. And so it looked like to me, it looked like they were. Scavenge on different ice.
They.
So. Well, I think, I just want to say. Guys, correct me if. He's like, he's. Uh, I think one of the things that. I think we agree is that.
He's.
He's. There's something. Oh, what do they?
I don't know. Does it change? Where I usually just be intentional about it. Where you can be intentional about. So I. But increasing. I use my. The. Creator personally. To. Players. If I go to the same. As your level planners. And you're all graduating. Like planners, I'm not increasing by. So I have a little challenge, you need to say, well, both the two categories in five schools, also maybe I shouldn't. People with white injuries. No, I've seen the preview.
The skills gonna be. Things that didn't teach them much to planners. And I know that's. Especially if white. So it's not teachers, but I think it is. During. Surely. Hold it. Was for learning in different places to get qualified, hold it again, to have unqualified. And we all agree, but I just.
And I. What kind of.
Good show.
I did, and we did put. It's like that broader.
Yeah, I never. I read the story, and so I watched it.
And so we, you need, I, we should have people in different positions. You know, there's a little people person that's teaching, there's a, an American person, that, that should be in. It should be like, oh, just.
Yeah.
Folks, start here, go first, start.
Well, I'll just start. Yeah, I'll just start with, you know, I mean, one of the things that he said is, we also recognize, we're doing pieces of this right now, and I think it's very clear, and. We don't want to violate work, and I just, I think, you know, being from the research management, I took that to begin, I'm just very clearly from the energy efficiency, on sustainability. But I didn't say it, but in our conversation, it was not just energy, building energy efficiency, it's also the, the community. Just like, there's, there's areas, like, we could really broaden what it means to model sustainability. Jordan would say anything.
Yeah, I, I, my, I think, um, I was mentioning physical wellbeing of all, I should consider, actually, it's not, you know, we always talk about the social, promotional. Models, but this helps for, remember, we have kids that've been home for almost two years, and they're really increasing back into it, we've got threats that have been happening, that we rely on regular teachers to, and it's no offense to them, but I mean, what else do you? To speak to them about their emotions, and how people are on this endeavor, and they plan this and things, which is why, um, I believe, uh, Jason, you know, it's been, well, let's get that into the concept from social worker, that helps kind of broaden that aspect of how can we then about that, uh, with our resource, I, I kind of. Resource.
Yeah, and then I will just, so, and then, yeah, getting beyond the data visually conveying ideas, to me, there's a, there's. From the community bridge inside, I kind of find, I'm thinking about internally necessarily, though, it makes great, help us as a board, if we're, you know, but I, I think it just, just being able to convey. The ideas that we're doing, and just continually push ourselves to make it really accessible, and a lot of words and a lot of tables is not that, not made from budget or anything, I'm just saying, anything we do, we try and make that accessible. So there's the big ones.
So, um. It's all.
Others add, he needs to add, because we are here, so he has. Some of these. I wish he had. Um, and then, and there is, for every. How to. Ways. Opposites, you know, the mental. About. Creative ways that. What.
Who models sustainability, if you do a. A. A hobby site.
I've never watched it, but I can.
Start with the. Comment, uh, for all.
Yeah.
Think about how you are not gonna waste something. Yes, stewardship came up at the. Station, and I think that's a big part of that.
Unless, I think, one of them is.
Yeah.
And so. We'll continue to. We'll be. And so we do. Our. All families that are part of history, it'll have to show up for all.
Their.
Feel connected. And have some kind of meaningful connection with it.
Yeah. And if I could just, I think if everything on here, I'd love everything, I'm just fixated on right now, the succession thing, or what I'm. Like, to me, there's like a key here between what you just said, and that, and I just really think that that is something that might be one of these, like, most. I don't know how we all got it, it was almost the worst. What are different pathways? What, what, what did you say? Did I write down?
I wrote down the words.
Operationalize.
Operationalize. I. I just created. Communicate. Have this. Yeah, the only one was. There was the, there was the great, that's where they did the job.
But like.
Yeah. Yeah.
But like the rest of.
Well, actually.
Eighteen days, that episode's still to this day. And it just seems also like that is. Way to introduce people to the whole government's thing, that we're doing, and we're still doing that full conversation, because that is part of our framework. I don't, I just need to read the book. Everybody, everybody that wants to. Book, and that's never gonna happen, so then what if you operate.
Part of. Sorry, question, like, yours is. You still trying?
I didn't realize.
You guys try to be.
Yeah. You know. Challenge, you know, your challenge. Everything. But that's. The one where George. Take his. That's right.
You guys want.
I just wanted to say that at the last. That's the one thing that is, or maybe else, something is.
George. And this. She's. 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 Talking to the. And that's good.
I would say, Justin, Steve.
And you want to be my.
So. Just your own prison.
Frank, when he, when he stores the.
Strategic.
Or humans. The men against.
So.
Bet you know.
Right.
Yeah. So they. Like, I totally take them as. They never. Really. I miss.
So.
Arrest.
He. That's. The same time.
Letter, can you have to watch with them sometimes?
Oh, yeah.
Hilarious. Oh, it can.
Well, what?
So. I.
Cause I like, how, how do you interest?
The problem, the problem letter is so fast. Like, the whole show is so fast, and that's why they have to do sometimes. But it's.
They, they all talk.
Yeah, but it's. The timing.
That's. That's. But there's something to the next person.
I'm.
It's. Why? I think there are. You know, it is. Making more sense.
And that's fine.
Sometimes you got a lot. Some of them. Those shows, like. I have, where there's so little things going on, so I could like, if you like more to. And then they start missing more than.
That must be something.
Except, right.
I'll try to take these big. Look at it as something that, so when you read it, it is kind of. Hopefully, it captures some of.
But.
I love. This is like, this is what we missed. We haven't had a retreat, we haven't had a chance, we have now together, and. And the time is right. But this is stuff that we should.
Although, I was thinking that. I don't want you to. Actually. Yeah.
Cause we thought we covered it all. What?
What was the actor?
If you got the heart, you're like, what?
Yeah, yeah. But I think that's right, but, yeah.
So that I'm on the end of days, and I used to.
I could.
I mean, it's.
But also, just, I think, very, very. Well, is it like. Workshop, kind of, okay, because I think this is helpful, because we can have small conversations, because if the conversation was three, unless had, we could not have had seven people. And then. And then. Just like working for me. It was a really good show.
Great. So I'll have a nice meeting with those.
Who was that person?
Uh, I.
Okay. You know, sometimes we have visitors that are from different districts and, or working on their doctorate or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
Board docs.
All right, section twelve allows for board comments, but I kind of feel like we just sort of had some concluding comments for our meeting. Yes, except Jordan.
No, I don't need that, I just. I know, I, not just a, a special phenomenal thank you to the Thompson Family Foundation, that's.
Yeah, that's pretty amazing.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to, I had that noted, just, that's super generous and.
Absolutely.
And.
Claire, that's for documentation.
I mean, I don't know where else to go with that, so. Not that others weren't deserving, but that was one that definitely stood out for me.
Appreciate it.
Um, otherwise, thank you to all of our administrators who come and spend the evening with us and prepare all of this for us, and on that note, um, I am going to make motion to adjourn to executive session regarding pursuant personnel in real estate to sections six one zero point zero two one three and six one zero point zero two one two. Do I have a second? All right, and this is a real call.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Yes, so we are adjourned at nine seventeen. We're going to the. Yes, five minutes.
Five minutes.
So. Don't scare you.